What's up everyone? Welcome back to another episode of the 817 Podcast. You might be listening to this on the 4th of July, or maybe a little bit later in the week. We hope you're having a good day. And we've got an exciting interview coming out that we teased a little bit last week, but EJ, who do we have talking with us today?
So today we have Michael D. Crane, District 3 City Council member to the city of Fort Worth. Really excited to have him on the pod as we're going to discuss all things from the development in his district to short-term rentals. We hit several different questions and has a great discussion with Michael. But a little bit about Councilman Crane, he was in various positions within the President George W. Bush's administration. He also was the Chief of Staff at the US Embassy in Beijing. He's a real estate broker and he graduated from Texas A&amp;M Business School. So without further ado, here is Michael Crane.
My name is Michael Crane and I was born here in Fort Worth, Texas. Kind of as my story I like to tell is I was born in Harris Hospital. So it was District 9 before some other folks were District 9. And my father owned an auto recycling business over off Riverside Drive. So it was District 8 before some of the others were District 8. You know, grew up on Northwest 25th Street, District 2. So it was District 2 before that in the North Side and then eventually moved to Saginaw for a little bit. And then over to Eagle Mountain Lake where I went to Boswell High School. So I was District 7 before some of the other folks were District 7. Now I have the honor and privilege of representing District 3 over here on the West Side of Fort Worth. So a little bit of me is in all parts of Fort Worth and that's what I think is great about this. We moved away from Fort Worth for about 14 years, moved to Washington DC and then Beijing, China where I was Chief of Staff of the US Embassy. So I got to see Fort Worth and Texas and you know, the United States in general from a different lens, being abroad and just having a different, I don't know, a different cadre of friends there from all over the world. And so when it came time after we had adopted our twins to move back to the United States so they can be raised as an American, we looked all over the place where we wanted to live. And I kept having this feeling of I wanted to be raised like I was. I wanted to be raised home. And my wife and I, who grew up in South Texas, it took a little time. If you can recall, that was along about 2011, 2012 and Fort Worth was doing a shift at that time. And when we left in 2000, we were not coming back. It was too small of a city. It was too, it just wasn't exciting enough. But in that decade, it sort of took off. So we left in 2014 from Beijing and moved back here and just got involved.
Awesome.
How did, if when Fort Worth would come up in conversations in DC or in Beijing, what was like the reaction to it? Or what was the perception that people had of it?
Yeah, I mean, if they even knew what it was, most of the time they'd say Dallas, right? You're from Dallas. Even when I went to A&amp;M, the College Station, they'd say Dallas. I'd be like, no, I'm from Fort Worth. And I always held that ground. And that's, that was, you know, the days we probably might've been 250, 300,000 people. Now we're approaching a million. Hell, we can't even get our airport to say Fort Worth. It's Dallas or DFW. Yeah. Just at some point say Fort Worth as a part of it. Dallas, Fort Worth Airport, or even just Fort Worth. I'd be happy with that too. But overall, it's been hard. It's been hard across the board to, you'd see from those examples alone, for people to understand what a big city we are, how large we are, approaching a million people. It really, I think, flabbergasted people when I say, you know, we're the 12th city or the 13th city depending on the latest you see with the, but we're also the fastest growing big city in the United States. I think it still takes people by surprise.
What, you said you left because it wasn't exciting enough. What makes Fort Worth exciting now to you?
Well, I think if you look across, listen, we, I grew up in, you know, lake life and having a great time and pretty much you don't understand. At that point even late where we grew up on the lake wasn't part of Fort Worth. It had been annexed later. But you know, you kind of have your own little bubble that you live in, but you now look and say there are hundreds, if not thousands of bubbles all over the city with people that are different from each other as the city has grown over the last two decades. And it will continue to grow over the next decade. So what for us, for my wife, we looked at, yeah, we were in DC. Great, exciting, all types of things happening. You know, I thought about, gosh, New York would be great. We spent a lot of time because it's easy up there, right? To get from DC to New York, a lot of time in New York. And, but I think eventually what happens when you have children, it just changes your outlook and how you want your life to be. Because it's just not about you anymore and about your enjoyment, your excitement. It's about what, what is the city I live in or where I choose to live off for my children as well. And so for us, that was a shifting moment to say, well, you know, if we go to New York or DC, or we could go down to LA or Houston or somewhere else, you'd spend a lot more time commuting back and forth to wherever you're going to go than really living life. Did I really want to be on a train to, because when you age with children, you don't really live in New York anymore. You go to, you know, to suburb or somewhere else and you're on the train for an hour and a half. And so you think about I'm losing three hours a day in DC. You don't live, you know, we had a house right on Capitol Hill, but that wouldn't have been satisfactory for two children. Their little, you know, row house. We would have lived out in McLean or Arlington or Alexandria or somewhere else. And the commute, that's where my, and that commute wasn't worth it. And then my wife, at one point, after, you know, the days that we lived in DC, she said, I don't want to work 14, 16-hour days anymore. I want to be able to enjoy life and enjoy our kids. And so your question really was about what was exciting about Fort Worth. You just saw restaurants starting to prosper. You saw, you know, before it was chain restaurants, that was about it. That's what I grew up going to. But you saw all these chefs start locating here and creating businesses. You saw small businesses that were, you know, in, lack of a better term, funky. They were just different than what we'd seen before and they weren't the big chain stores. So all of that, I think, was just a vibe that was happening in the early 2010s. And I think it's carried on as it's now. Those are a part of our fabric of the city.
Yeah. So now we're a year into your city council membership. How do you feel like the first year has been? What have been like some of the big challenges or surprises you feel like you face? What are some big wins you feel like you've had for your community in the city?
Well, it feels about a year and 10 years, five minutes a year and 10 years all at the same time.
Y'all kind of got thrown into the fire.
We did, we did. And yeah, I, I look at this as a moment, it really got, I'm getting to live in a moment of history that I don't think other people had or will have, where we had six of the anonymous turnover all at the same time. We shifted from an average age of 60 to 45 overnight. There were 20 kids, 14 and under with the council. So it was just in essence, a generational shift that I think needed to happen for Fort Worth where we are now, where we're going and growing. So I'm excited to be a part of that, having come in with some knowledge, have already, you know, was the District Director for four years. The previous councilman, you know, I got a really a good start pretty quickly. For me was a continued focus. I probably, I have what I described the most economically diverse district. Because I have $5 million gated communities and then I've got, you know, Las Vegas Trail and Como at best $40,000, $50,000 houses. Or, you know, so, you know, and poverty rate and everything else. And so you have, whoever sits in this seat, at least for District 3, has to be able to go into both worlds and have credibility in both worlds. And so I think we've done some great things. You know, I picked up the gauntlet of Las Vegas Trail area and what I've been calling the LBT, you know, 2.0, where we, we have, we create a PIT, Public Improvement District that brings about $300,000 more into, you know, trash abatement, into programming, increased programming of community center and public safety in the area. That was a big win. It took a few years to do it. I just happened to be the one that was able to pass it. $3.5 million Public Improvement Grant that goes in there, Neighborhood Improvement Grant, that will help with streets and sidewalks and lights, et cetera. We've, we're reimagining Las Vegas Trail, the street itself, and it will be shrunk down. Norman Delworth comes in, we'll have a roundabout with a big piece of public art, which is just about giving some hope and aspiration to the people that live there, that hey, there is some, some, some concentration and emphasis here. And that goes across the, we, there should be a forthcoming announcement too. I can't really spoil it now, but I'll just say this. There is no public health clinic west of Como. So if you think about how far Fort Worth has grown, there's nothing, nothing west of there. There's a Cook Children's that's out towards Walsh, but if you look, there is nothing. So probably by the fall, we'll have an announcement there of some pretty transformational change that I'm excited about. And then you just look across the board and you have big wins too. We have the Neighborhood Improvement Grant that went into Como. That's streets and lights and sidewalks. And so it's, it's, it's been good to be able to direct some of those things, knowing that. And then we have this transformation plan, Las Vegas Trail, that we hired a third-party vendor, Interface Studios out of Philadelphia to help us with. And that should be coming out in the next several weeks of all the information they gathered. We know what the issues are there, but it's good to have it on paper, but we know that there's crime. What is interesting to me is the crime that's there. A lot of it is domestic. It starts domestic and then turns violent. And so with that, to me, it says there's a lot of education that needs to happen, a lot of mental health access that should be available there. And for me, if we can, this is kind of the idea, a lot of the, there is a lot, a lot of people we've found do have healthcare there. They just don't use it for preventative care for whatever reason. And that might be because it accesses there. So if we can get it solved there, it costs taxpayers, I'm just making these up, I don't know, but a dollar versus waiting until it becomes a larger problem and it ends up with the taxpayers downtown at JPS and it costs us $10.
Yes.
So why are we not trying to solve that problem or help them solve their problems or issues when we can? And we know it's an issue before it becomes a larger issue. That's what I've been working on.
Could you also kind of give us your take on the economic development of Fort Worth? And as if, you know, there's been a lot of the combos of how do we land these, these Rivians or these, these companies? And oftentimes your district is going to have to be the, the cell, Walsh Ranch, these spaces. Can you kind of give an inside look of what strategy looks like there? What kind of, what do you feel like are the hiccups? Or the things that we gotta do when, when you, when we do have a company in Fort Worth looking at us as a, as a place to either move or to expand?
Sure. Well, I have that West Side of Fort Worth go all the way out, as you mentioned, to Walsh. And I, I think there's differing opinions, right? On urban sprawl and what that looks like. And is it good for the city or not? What I can tell you is people want to live here. People want to be here in Fort Worth. So it's coming. So we either prepare for it or we don't. And I've talked to every single one of those ranches on the West Side of Fort Worth, or, you know, their reps, their engineers, et cetera. They are looking at the opportunity that we haven't maybe had in a generation or so for big, big moves, big companies. And so yes, that ties into economic development piece. We have our chamber along with our own economic department, Robert Stern's out talking to people and really doing the recruitment to say you want to be in Fort Worth. You brought up the Rivian deal. What that taught us that is we had never gotten down the road, you know, the Amazon deal that might've been happening. We never got to a real conversation. It was, we were never even made it to the top four or five or whatever. It was just like we, we wanted it and we were at the time partnering with Dallas and the Greater Metroplex. But we never got down to where we were possibly one of two choices. So what that taught us is we need to actually have some process in place and who's in the room, what's, how, what does that look like? So we can have these conversations with these big corporations to get them to relocate. What I'll say is almost every, every, right now, we have a tax imbalance, if you, if you know what I'm talking about. We have a residential tax base that's paying roughly 60% of the property taxes. Commercial's paying 40%. We cannot give anybody, you know, in a residential state, proper tax relief until that's more balanced. So we can cut a penny here, that and a half a cent or whatever is, we'll probably do this next budget cycle. But it won't be real relief until we have more commercial. So any major planned developments that happen now have a substantial amount of commercial as part of a residential piece. So that's what you'll see happen in the West Side. The Rivian deal that you brought up, what we learned from that was we have two, Walsh has 2,000 marketable acres for some big commercial development. You cannot find that anywhere else close to a major metroplex.
Yeah.
So what we've committed to a city is to continue to get the utilities out there so we can market this as a shovel-ready project for someone that's ready to do a Rivian deal, ready to do something like that, to create the jobs. These are good paying jobs. I think, and I don't want to misquote, but I think it was somewhere in the effect of, you know, minimum or average was $65,000, $70,000 for these jobs. So that is also part of any economic incentive deal that we do is that these are real paying jobs over time, not, not low-paying jobs coming in. So that's sort of, at least the strategy from the city right now is to continue to look at things and things or corporations or other things that want to set up like that.
Yeah, kind of talking about like growth, especially in West Fort Worth. There, I think this was from like a week, maybe 10 days ago, about the potential Tech Dot expansion of I-30 headed west and some of the potential windfalls of that as far as like pollution and how close to highways, like some of the schools are located and all of that. Have you gotten the chance to hear from like people in your district about that yet? Or what is like the mood or just what you're hearing from them about potential expansion and multi-year construction on I-30 going out that way?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on, on where you live, right? So there's, and it, for your, for your listeners, just to talk about, this is a expansion of 30 that really runs from downtown west, you know, past Ridgemar, Ridgemar Mall, all the way out to, you know, 820. And then west of 820 further. And anybody that lives on one side of the 820, if you're familiar with driving there, it will sometimes get backed on all parts of the day. So it's not just around rush hour, et cetera. Where it bottlenecks under 820. So if you're trying to get into or outside of 820, we've got to do something to alleviate that. The unfortunate part is that, that mixed master, for lack of a better term, it's wall-to-wall. So you can't just put another lane there. You've got to reimagine that. So I know on the outside of 820, what Tech Dot, I think from that article, it quoted about a billion dollars to do this whole project. So I know people have designs and plans, but I have not heard, and I think it says in that article that you referenced, that there is no money for the project, that they know the project needs to be done. Which I love that. I love when people say, yeah, we know it, but we don't really have the money for it. Okay. Well, then you just get people excited about it or angry about it when it's not even a reality yet. So. But this has been a multi-year approach. So every, outside of 820, I think is the easiest part for them to do because there is some land. And part of it is simple changes in front of Lost Creek, Brumbaus, on the South Side there of 30, it would change that to one, one way. It probably needs to be done anyway. Those are more rural areas have two-way on the same side of this, a major interstate. But that's not rural anymore, even though there's, there's still open space. It's not a rural area. And so those are easy changes. As far as getting close to neighborhoods, that probably gets close to when you're talking about Ridgely North and Ridgemar. There may be, and it, it sounds like it's at least alluded to, I don't want to get people up in arm, but if you're going to expand 30 there, it does go into some houses. So, but I think everybody understands that an expansion of 30, like we're doing it with 20 on the other side is probably necessary. We're just a major, not only a major city, but also a major thoroughfare that people are getting from east to west. And so, but I think they'll do it sensitively. You know, that would be a major project with Tech Dot, with the national, you know, the Central Texas Council of Governments and with the city to a certain extent. But as you know, we're, we're a growing city and people love, we love our cars. So, so, so yeah, it will, it will come. But I think we've got to give some relief. I mean, I'll drive sometimes and the, the, it gets backed up from 820 all the way to Ridgemar Mall or Ridgemar. So that's mile and a half, two miles where you're going maybe 15 miles an hour. So I don't, I don't, I don't think that's sustainable.
Yeah. Well, continuing on like the articles that have been out. I know city council just kind of had a meeting around the $28 million stimulus spending. And, you know, maybe how that was shared with you guys, what was decided on? And then other council members wanting things funded for in their spaces. Can you kind of give context of how do you see that moving forward? And maybe how you guys look to move forward from the article?
Sure. The, you know, our work session last Tuesday, that was the first time most of us had seen those recommendations. And that's really not one way to do business. And I think staff understand that now, that we, this money I'm looking at, and I think most of my colleagues, it is once in a lifetime money. It is not coming back. We're not getting this again. We're not, it's not, it's not, it's, it's once. We're getting it. So we need to be wise with what we're doing. And we've already, and I've supported other initiatives that we've done, you know, building permanent supportive housing that we know we need to, to help some folks. I've been okay with that. I've been okay with, you know, the expansion. What we did during COVID, and you know, David Cook, to his credit, City Manager, took a lot of these major projects off the table in short of our budget. And so when we came out of COVID, we were one of a few cities that I know and have, that looked, and we, our budget was okay. We had done a good job. So we were able to take that money and put those major projects, one being the Convention Center. The Convention Center expansion. I like the idea that we're using this for income generating projects. Or projects that might take a longer time to do or they're, you know, major bond projects. There are parameters on how we can spend this money. But we put the, the Convention Center expansion back on it. We've needed it for a long period of time. We have, and I don't know the numbers, but it's something like $30 to tourism. It's $5 to the local economy. It might be more than that. But that's what we have to do as a city. We're looking at, again, trying to relieve, you know, that, to me, that leads back to property tax relief. If we're, have more of that kind of income coming, that's not our citizens' dollars. It's other people coming here and spending that money. It might be someone, y'all, y'all going date night or somewhere and, and stay at the Omni and have a, pay your hotel occupancy tax. It might be some local folks, but for the most part, it is in my, in my, you know, it's money coming from outside Fort Worth to help Fort Worth. So I think that was the confusion at this last work session was why is this just the first time we're seeing it? And I said something, I was like, I think we got to step back, but because I want people to realize this, this is still taxpayer dollars. It's not, it just didn't rain out of the sky. You, I, all your families have paid in, it just went to the federal government and the federal government's giving it back to you. So let's be wise, because when it's gone, it's gone. And I think there were some things sort of thrown on there that might need a relook and might be able to get the funding needed at a, at a, at a different time. And other than the timeline, I'll say this, other than the timeline to, to have projects ready, we're not in a hurry, I'm not in a hurry to spend that money. So the county might be, and so that would be a question for them. But, but I'm not in a hurry from the city perspective to spend that money unless I know it really is. And they talked about it, non-revenue and revenue generating activities. And I won't speak for, you know, Mayor Proten Vivens, but she's got real concerns of people drowning and real infrastructure on her side of the city.
Yeah.
Okay. None of that was included in any of that funding. Kind of, I mean, obviously upset her if you, if you watched it. And I don't blame her. That's why I was, I was willing to back her up. But these are the kind of things we should probably be looking at versus some of the other things that weren't included.
So you've alluded to the budget cycle a couple of times. Obviously, last year, when y'all were coming into it, it was kind of like, oh, we're sworn in and all of a sudden, like the budget is kind of already set and we're figuring this out. How is the cycle started a little differently for you being a year into city council now for the upcoming budget process?
Yeah, I think something to understand, and I'm not 100% that my colleagues understand this, the budget cycle starts as soon as we pass the other budget. So in October, end of September, and we pass for October, the new budget cycle starts. Staff starts getting together, starts getting their recommendations together, starts putting that on the table for what needs to be done. So I knew, I knew that. What I started advocating with staff are problem areas or things that I knew needed to continue to have a focus. You know, we know there's infrastructure issues still in Como. Great. We need to make sure we continue to focus on that. We know that there, you know, my district especially, there's going to be the growth. So are we looking at how we're funding all of the, the streets and roads in that area, especially everything outside of 820? I have Chapel Creek right now and they have constantly, you know, what I've said across the board is we, I'm not going to be, for sure not going to be sitting in a seat in 10 years. Someone else is going to be having all this fun that I get to have. And by fun, I'm going to do air quotes. There's a little bit of fun and a whole lot of BS that happens, but, but I, we're not, I'm, I'm not going to, I don't want to leave that person, whomever it is, playing catch-up as we're trying to do in the north part of Fort Worth. They did not build east-west arterials for the, for those folks. They just built and built and built. And it wasn't anybody's fault. It wasn't anybody in particular. It wasn't, they didn't look at it holistically, that it's going to be built out. We know what the master plan says. So let's plan what the city should as part of that. So those are the conversations I've been having on the, the West Side of Fort Worth is they've got to have north-south arterials to get to the major interstates. Right now in Chapel Creek area, there's really two ways out, Chapel Creek and White Settlement Road. Those are the only two ways out of that hole and we are building there. So that is on that. And some of that takes coordination with COG and with Tech Dot, but that's been on there. So really the, the process starts before, you know, asked for some increased funding for our parks. And I'm asked for increased funding, especially this Bomber Spur project I've been working on. There's money put in the, the bond, about $3 million. We've got $3 million from COG. This is, if you, if you know the, the trails, it right at Dickory, where there's a Walmart right there at Dickory and 183, basically, the trails end on the West Side and they don't pick up again until maybe around the, the base. But there is a spur that was created back in the 40s to get, and if you, if you drive over 183, you'll kind of go across a railroad track, but there's no railroad on it. That's the spur. It would bring parts from one depot up to the base. And if you completed that, and we have, we're doing some quieting of title there, we've got to get over 30. That's the biggest chunk of money. But it would create a 26-mile loop around the city of Fort Worth on the training trails. For those homes in Bomber Heights where you back up to the trail, I can tell you right now, their property values will go up.
Yeah.
Because people will want to live on that trail. They can open their door, open the back gate, get on a bike. And that's one of our struggling neighborhoods that I represent too. So I think it can be a game changer for them as well. So overall, it's, 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 that process starts, you know, a year ago. And really what's coming forward is now, and I'll say this, it's not necessarily just about specific asks and dollar-wise. It's really about policy, like what things do you want to see? And that really helps David and staff drive the budget that they bring back to us.
How does, you said it's about policy. How does policy, navigating policy in Fort Worth differ than navigating policy in DC?
Wow. I don't, I don't, I think the tenants are the same in that really it's about building coalitions, right? It's about building people that, and I'm a firm believer, there's more across, I don't care what your party is, I don't care what your affiliations are. There's more that are alike about us than they're different. You know, I can talk, speak to my colleagues. I think there was a big misnomer that, that certain, certain ones of us would fight because maybe ideologically, we didn't see the same. But as you know, there's a lot of the, the political that isn't city-related. I mean, so when you, when you, and in my opinion, when you peel, peel away that rhetoric and it's not something that, then you get down to the heart of where you sit. And so, you know, I, I'm, you know, I, I still think it's possible, at least to be conservative, but have compassion and common sense. Conservative away with taxpayer dollars, what you're doing with those dollars, where those go. But compassion to understand, there are people that are not like me and there are people not like you. And there are other people that have different needs. And, and again, in recognition that we are a large city and that I think there's still people that think we're 200,000 people, but we're not. We're a million people almost. And so that's where that common sense comes in too, of this is sometimes just the right thing to do. And so I, I don't, I don't, I, I think the, maybe what I still appreciate about the city level is we're not politically polarized here. That we understand differences and, you know, my colleagues were out doing things this weekend that I wasn't necessarily doing. And I was doing things they weren't necessarily doing. I was cutting ribbons at a Kaboom playground at Western Hills Elementary. But that's, that's everybody's sort of right to do so. But in the end, we all, I think, respect each other and get along. At least maybe, you know, we don't always all hang out, but we all understand at least the motivations of each person and what they're trying to accomplish. And understanding too, that we all represent different people. You know, when one of my colleagues says something or does something, I know that he needs to say those things. It's not personal to me. It's not personal to anything else or any, he needs to have that message for his, his constituents. I mean, and much like me at the work session, when I said, wait, I think we've got to step back and look at this because these are taxpayer dollars. I needed my constituents to hear that, that I'm looking at their taxpayer dollars. That's my biggest job. Outside public safety is my biggest job to make sure that the city is spending their money wisely. I think everybody should do that. It doesn't mean we agree on where the money should be spent every time. It just means we have a conversation about what that looks and we all are in agreement of sorts. It may all, may not be a about what that looks and we all are in agreement of sorts. It may all, it may not be a non-zero vote, but all in agreement that that's a wise expense of those dollars.
You want to, uh, move into short-term rentals?
Yeah, um, I know the city is, I know the city is, uh, starting its, uh, I guess campaign for like public engagement process, uh, July 5th. What kind of, what's kind of the expectation or what is even just, if you could set the situation for the average listener? What's going on with short-term rentals, AKA the Airbnbs of the world and people who do that or people who stay in those rather than the Omni? Um, what does that, what does that look like for Fort Worth?
Yeah, probably back in September at a work session, the mayor, we were talking about something and, and this issue got brought up and she's sort of, she charged staff, she goes, we got to do something about it. The, the issue is we have, we do have a, just so no misnomers with folks, we have a short-term rental ordinance on the books. It basically says a short-term rental is anything less than 30 days. So short-term rentals as, as you or I might use that, you know, you go for a weekend or go for a week with family. Those are, um, outside certain, maybe I would say commercial zones are not allowed in the city of Fort Worth. And those are, those have been set aside, um, those zones. Um, and so what got brought up is, you know, we, if you Google right now or go to VRBO or Airbnb or whatever platform you use, you'll see that there are tons of, of short-term rentals available in the city of Fort Worth. We do not have the, the code enforcement staff to go to every single one of those. And with the process as it sits now, imagine they get, they have to go, hi, you know, um, are you allowed to be here? Yes. Can you show me your lease? So someone pulls up the lease. Some have gotten smart, uh, some of the, some of the, the owners and they give them a thirty day lease. They may only be staying there for three or four days, but they, they, you show it to our code and the code goes, okay. And then they leave because they're legally that they've, they've satisfied. Um, but even if you're there and they're only there for two or three days, by the time you get through the adjudication process, those people are gone. So it's really an unenforceable ordinance. Uh, by the time you go and you cite them or you go here. So when the mayor brought this up, I was in agreement too. Listen, I, I've been pretty public with this. I use short-term. My wife and I, our family use short-term rentals when we go into cities. Do I look up to see if they're illegal, legal or illegal? I don't. I just use the platforms, uh, that we use to find them. And I understand they're not for everybody. I think the real issue comes down to, and I haven't made my decision. I'm, staff is coming back and I haven't been clear with people because I've had neighborhoods say that you've already made your decision. I was like, I'm waiting on staff. We, we set policy. That's what we're supposed to be doing. Staff outlines what those policy choices can be, and then we'll have a discussion as council, what makes the most sense. I've got one vote. So everybody else, you know, I don't know where they sit either. Um, but I, but you know, they're looking at what's best practices in other cities. They're looking at National League of Cities has promulgated some information on short-term rentals. Um, but I think the great divide really comes into private property rights. What can I do with the property I own as long as it's not offending any other properties versus, um, I don't want that in my neighborhood. I don't want a new guest every week in my neighborhood. And so I, 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 maybe it's a generational divide. I don't know. Maybe there's, there's a fear of, of that. And that's where we're trying to work through. I want to, as I've had conversations with people that are against it, I want to have a rational conversation. Not that my sisters, brothers, aunts, uncle heard about a party house down the road and someone got hurt, but what was the real issue? And I think the real issue is that these have been left somewhat unchecked. So there's platform accountability, you know, us putting agreements in, in place with the major platforms, um, that then have the ability, if they aren't registered with the city, and you know, there's a registration system with the city, but they pull them off the platform. That gives more accountability on both sides. Also just understanding how the rental process works and, you know, people are rated on both sides. So yeah, I guess you can set up a fake account. You can do all that to get a house. But there's a thousand of those, you could do this.
Yeah.
But, but I, what I tell some of these folks are also the story of a couple of stories, the, the kids that come in, um, to, for the rodeo. You know, that really the stock show part of the rodeo, they spent thousands of dollars on their pig or their animal and they want to be close. And so I had a chat, chat with this thirteen-year-old girl who's like, yeah, my family got this because at any moment's notice, we need to be here in about ten minutes. Cause it's feeding times during things, but also, uh, we have family that are coming in so they can stay with us. Um, so, so yes, we use it because of that, because it's more economical. We have to be here for three weeks. It doesn't make sense to sit in a hotel for three weeks. Um, and then the other side of during Colonial, I was walking with one of the golf, golfers and he was pointing to, he was like, I'm staying in the house over there. I was able to rent it for the two weeks that we have to be here and all the appearances they have to do outside, I just playing golf. He said, but my whole family's here, my teams, my bros, everybody's here with me and close. And so for every one bad story, there's, you know, a thousand good stories of families or people that have had great experiences in these. And so it's a real balance. How do we not affect negatively neighborhoods? And I'm committed to doing that, but at the same time, um, uh, help protect people's private property rights.
You kind of see this also, I, I think a lot of the, the, the outcry or the frustration about it though, is as well around corporate purchases of, of, of homes and, um, now for people to just want to buy a home to live in rather than to a second home to Airbnb outs. Um, what do you think is the impacts of, of short-term rentals or Airbnbs on the housing market for first-time home buyers? Which, you know, if the average Fort Worthian is in their early thirties, they're probably looking to do, um, what is kind of your take on the impacts of where Airbnb and that kind of goes and what the city is learning about that from that angle?
Yeah. I mean, there's no doubt. Obviously if you take a house and turn it into a short-term rental versus an actual owner or a long-term lease, you're taking how, housing out of, out of the, off the market. Um, and that's obviously something we have to worry about. There was an article out there about one of the major publications here that I, I think I wish they would have dug a little deeper. The headline was half the stories, half the homes are, um, purchased by corporations. What, what they didn't outline in there and the house I'm in, right in my house was bought by a corporation, updated, flipped, and then sold to a pri, a single family as a single family residence. So I wish they would have parsed that data instead of, uh, just making a headline. Cause that headline is what's making around, see, you know, half the homes are now gone. They've been purchased by corporations supposedly for, and, and that's the follow-up question, were they short-term rentals? Were they long-term leases? Or were they actually flipped again to private, private families? Um, and, and so I, I think you're going to see that number come down. The, I'll just say this, um, being a real estate broker, um, looking at this from that perspective, it, we are in a housing somewhat crisis. Um, but I also know there's more inventory coming on because the demand's there. It's, it's a good and bad problem. People want to live here. People are at a point that they can't afford homes. Uh, we're also trying to catch up in, in, in the apartments and market and there's really a whole missing middle that we've got to really focus on. That's something maybe from the city, we can incentivize in some ways and so people build that. Um, and that's a discussion we should be having, but no doubt we're in a housing crunch here in, in, in the, in the fourth and the, the metroplex. But I don't believe they're all being turned over into short-term rentals, which is that rational conversation I want to have, that they're not necessarily coming off the market. I mean, it just, it's simple economics. You, with the house that you own or you're trying to own, you may or may not own it outright, but you still have taxes you have to pay on it. And if it's not your, if it's not your, you don't get the homestead exemption, if it's not your homestead, um, you also have just the upkeep and maintenance that you have on it. So when you start doing simple economics, there are certain places in certain neighborhoods that will never be touched by a short-term rental. Because you can never get that. And I, I think those are the voices we're hearing from of people scared of in, in big, your homes, et cetera. Um, that, that, those are the real voices I think we're hearing. Um, we're not hearing from the neighborhoods that likely will be touched because I just don't think they're paying, paying attention. Uh, but at the same time, I do know this, if you have a short-term rental, unlike a long-term lease or your own home, you have to keep that property ever maintained or people will not pay to stay in that home.
Yeah.
And so that, it just, that part of it too, is I want people to understand you can drive, I've got three long-term leases on my block and they are not the best kept houses. They don't have to be. The, the owner's made a purchase. So we're not even talking about that part, but it is, it is, I think there's a lot of fear out there and I think there's a, a conversation to be had if people could step back and just have a rational one. And sometimes I say, you know, go talk to your kids, your nieces and nephews and ask them, have they ever used one? Ever? They stayed in one? What have you done? I think that people will understand it's a little more widely popular. Um, but it is a little bit, they don't want it in their backyard. So we've got to figure out a way to balance property, you know, private property rights at the same time, not, um, degradate, degrad, degradating neighborhoods.
Yeah. Yeah, we, my wife and I in 2017 and 2018 used to rent out our guest bedrooms on Airbnb and we were shut down by the city because somebody in our neighborhood found out, apparently didn't like it, never even came to have a conversation with us or anything. And then all of a sudden we have a code compliance thing on our door saying, if you continue doing it past this date, you're going to get a fine of $5,000 a day. We're like, oh, okay. I guess we can't do this. But, uh, within the like 10 months we were doing it, we hosted people from 20 countries, like 35 different states. Uh, and it, it's a great way to have a local person show the city to you. Um, and so I'm for one excited to see the city and city council like actually take this on. Uh, because after our incident, I tried to reach out, you know, got the pass around from different people, the different agencies. And so I've been eagerly waiting for city council to take this on for four or five years now. So I appreciate that it's not just a swept under the rug, ignored thing at this point.
Again, it goes back to my opinion that we are a large city.
Yeah.
And we have problems like every other large city. And what I, what I've appreciated about this council is that we're not afraid to at least try and address them. That things are being brought up that have maybe simmered, simmered or been working under the surface for a long period of time. And that this is one of them, um, that, you know, and, and I, I don't look at changing ordinances lightly. There, there was a thought process that went into what those ordinances were. I mean, if they, but, but if it makes sense, then we should do it. I mean, another example is, uh, one of the coolest things I got done this year is that, uh, it came to my attention that you, you could not charge for backyard swimming lessons. That this, the way our ordinance was written, uh, you could not, unless it was taught inside a structure or the, the, the paid, um, activity was inside a structure. So you can work on cars in your backyard. You could do it as long as it was contained in a structure. That was fine, but teaching kids to swim was not because the pool wasn't considered a structure under our ordinance. So we had some neighbors that were upset about a pool and, and just the, the, the general sense, but I, as a policy matter, kids should be getting drowning prevention activities wherever they can get them.
Yeah.
Sometimes it, it's not that the mom can drive them across the, the, you know, to the other side, to the Y or wherever you're going to do it or Forest Park Pool. It might be convenient to walk down the street for their schedule to, to get those. You know, my own children even took scuba diving lessons inside someone's pool, but that would have been illegal per that. So, um, those kinds of things, I think, you know, we should change when they just don't make sense for how people are getting it. And when it's a good public policy move that people, kids should be learning to, to swim and not drown wherever they can get that. I don't care if it's in your neighbor's pool or at a big pool or private lessons or whatever, but, um, we've got a, that was just, it was an easy one. It took a little, there were some neighborhood that thought, again, it was, it was going to be more prolific and set up businesses in everybody's backyard, but it, it just isn't the case. So that was a, that was a good move.
Awesome. Uh, well, I would, I guess, close it off kind of the, the, the interview. I, I would love kind of any.
Our fund's over already?
Hey, I feel like we went, I know, I can't believe it's only, it's only, uh, been 40 minutes because I feel like we've gone through a lot. Uh, but I, but I do have like, you know, I think one, I, I, I respect, you know, I feel like how you approach your job. And I think regardless of people agree or disagree with how you, how you look at the, the world or, or your role, I feel like the, the, the readiness, the proactiveness, the, the response rate, uh, really personally notice it and really appreciate that as a citizen in Fort Worth. Uh, I would love to know like your advice or your take, because I feel like you're great at that. Matty's been great at that. Uh, I feel like navigating a, like you said, a polarizing world. Advice for people from even new Fort Worthians who didn't grow up here and lived in every cranny of, of Fort Worth like you did. What is your advice for people like me and Jimmy who, you know, are new Fort Worthians who are coming to this city? How could we see the full Fort Worth story? And you've been always generous to reach out to me or I say, hey, if I need help asking questions uh, about Fort Worth that we don't understand, that you were a source. So I would just love more kind of feedback on how, um, have you've successfully been a bridge between the Fort Worth you grew up to, to all these newcomers here. Um, what is your advice on how to walk that bridge?
Yeah, I mean, I would talk. I mean, I, I think we, we, we end up, um, being polarized because we, we talk or we get in our own, um, circle of people that, well, they have the same opinion, so they're right. Uh, that, that, that isn't actually the case. Just because someone shares your opinion doesn't mean they're right. Cause I can give you a million examples of, of that where that is not the case. And so I, you know, you know, I mean, I, there's a group called Texas Lyceum. It's made up of 96 directors, all from the state of Texas, and we all have different political affiliations, et cetera. I enjoy going to those conferences that I go to because it enlightens me, may, may not change my opinion on what I think, but it enlightens me to where other people, how other people think. And I think we got to do that here on a microcosm in Fort Worth where we break out of the same four, eight, 10 people that we, we always hang out with. And I try and do that as much as I can because I know that, again, as I said earlier, there's more that, that we have in common than we are different. And we might have our own sort of, of thoughts and, you know, using, I'll use an example. Um, you know, I know you kind of give the rodeo some, some shit sometimes, but can I say that? Um, but, but, but it is a part of Fort, uh, part of Fort Worth fabric. And what I'll say is there, it is, I, I grew up going to the rodeo, um, you know, going to play tic-tac-toe with the chicks, chickens that always beat me inside this, the, the stock show piece of it. But there, there are people that that is their tradition for them. And it doesn't mean it's to the exclusion of other traditions. It just means that this is something that they do as a family. And then, and the rodeo itself brings in, you know, millions and millions of dollars and tourism dollars into, into the city. That's a great thing. But I don't think that's exclusive from other things that can happen. Uh, and I think we just have to understand that, that as, as a city, um, and, and again, there is a lot of enlightenment, I guess is the best word that needs to happen for a lot of people. But, um, a, as you, just looking at the map, you see how big Fort Worth is and not everybody's going to think the same about every single thing. Doesn't mean they're right or doesn't mean they're wrong. It just means that, um, the way we, we maybe muscle through is to continue to have conversations and open dialogue and not get angry. I mean, we, it, it, it doesn't do any good for someone to get angry just because someone doesn't see the way they do. It, I haven't walked in anybody else's shoes except mine, right? And no one else has walked in any shoes except their own. So the more we can understand the, the path those shoes have traveled, uh, the more we can understand, okay, I, I'm maybe right 60% of the time. Uh, but you know, uh, but, but there's other viewpoints or, and we can all live where this, the, all, all truths exist in the same space. Uh, it just is the view that we're looking. And so I hope we continue to do that as a city. And I, I will say that over the course of, you know, my, at least five years being involved in public policy in the realm that I'm doing, you see that there's more outreach and I think it's an altruistic outreach of, we want to make the city the best that we can. In essence, that means bring as many voices to the table as, as, as we can. It, it doesn't mean that everybody around the table is going to agree, but it means the, the voices are heard. So I would say that the people that don't believe that their voices are being heard, then figure out how to outreach and maybe not make it an anger. I know that comes out of a point of frustration, of, of feeling of always trying to do it and it not being heard. But I know at least for me or my colleagues, and you mentioned the mayor. Um, we want to hear what's going on. Um, we want to hear how we can help and what we can do and, and keep making, you know, as I say, move Fort Worth forward.
I think that's a great note to end on. Uh, again, thanks for always offering to be a resource to us. Thanks for coming on and having this conversation. Uh, it means a lot when we can bring someone who is in the room and share perspective outside of what we can just see through the news and get further insight into things. So we really do appreciate it.
Thanks CJ. Thanks, Jimmy. I appreciate y'all having me on.
Well, thanks again to Councilman Crane for coming on, spending a, a Sunday morning with us and having this conversation. Uh, what, do you have any, any thoughts about anything you said?
I think it went by, you know, why I really liked that interview is that we hit a lot of important topics, uh, in a very short period of time. To me, this is a, a pod that if you haven't heard a lot of our pods in the podcast, I feel like it's just a good one to get a synopsis of the things we talk about. And getting connected with someone who actually knows more about it from the inside. Uh, so that's good. And I also know Michael's a podcast listener, so I feel like the way he was answering was also aware of like, he had historical data on how we talk about the pod, which also makes, I think makes a good interview. What about you?
Yeah, I think, well, one, I think we, uh, both give credit to him during the campaign season running up to the election, the previous council person that he campaign season running up to the election, the previous council person that he had worked for, Brian Bird, went pretty far right in his run for mayor. And so we had potential concerns of, is it, does this person veer the same way? How are they going to look at a district that, like he said, is really separated racially and socio-economically? But I feel like he has really stepped up in doing what is best for a lot of his district, especially continuing a lot of strong work in Las Vegas Trail. And just having a lot of common sense conversations like he talked about. So we definitely tip our hat to him for his first year in office and easing a lot of potential doubts or fears about what he could be stepping into that seat, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, one hundred percent. And I think what's cool about it is from a maybe political perspective or, or how, what we talk about the pod, he could probably be probably a most opposite or most different interview guest we've had on the pod. I don't know, like thinking about our guest. And so just, I think it's important for Fort Worth to have conversations like this where you could have different ideologies or different viewpoints and be able to still have a relationship in the sense of like being friends, but also being like, hey, we're going to have a discussion about this difficult city, which is a purple city and having to navigate that. Which I think the city council as a whole navigates that pretty well.
Yeah. Well, thanks again to Michael for coming on. Thanks for listening and we'll, we'll see you next week.